Find their seat and get ready for us to start the meeting. It is 5:30, the time the meeting has been noticed for. Thank you so much. Wonderful, nice to see everyone here this evening. Thank you all for being here. I would like to call to order the joint session of the McMinnville City Council and the McMinnville City Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Committee on September 24th, 2024. Meeting is called to order. And turn things over to Noel Amaya, our Communications and Engagement Manager, to introduce the topic today.
Thank you. I'll wait, Eugene, if we could get the PowerPoint presentation pulled up, please. Excellent. And I'll just wait for Tony for just a moment, so he can be seated.
I just want to interject. I'm letting people in, and I'm not sure if I should be doing that, so can city staff can let people in?
We'll take care of that, Charis, thank you.
All right, wonderful. Good evening, City Council members and members of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee. I'm really excited to be here to review what we've been working on since February. Can you believe it? So tonight, we're essentially going to go over what we've done to date, including the methods that were used and the findings from the score analysis. And then we'll get into the meat and potatoes of the recommendations, with plenty of time for discussion and Q and A. Talitha's presentation tonight should be about 45 minutes. And then we'll take a quick break and get into the discussion and questions. Go ahead and go to the next slide, Eugene. And again? Thank you so much. If you remember, this initiative kicked off with a similar work session that we had back in March. The City Council, at that point, had a chance to meet the Talitha team, who are all here this evening, and listen to an overview of the steps that we are going to walk through together, as we imagined what transformational change might look like for McMinnville. When we first presented to you back in March, we noted that hours of research were going to go into that first phase, which included a deep dive into McMinnville's existing policies, procedures, and workplace culture. The Talitha team spent many hours reading over 300 pages of documents that Jody and I collected. Between that initial request for information, or RFI, I believe it was Mayor Drapkin, who asked us to gather the meeting minutes and presentation materials that department leadership gave to the DEIAC in their first year. So we completed a second RFI, providing the consultant team with an additional 200 pages or so of reading material. You're welcome. From there, the Talitha team launched their mixed-method engagement strategy, which was a similar process, actually, to what was used in the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. It included 28 individual in-depth interviews, that's IDIs, which we'll refer to throughout the course of the presentation tonight. Those 28 interviewees were made up of both city staff and also external community members that were identified and selected by this committee and by also other city staff. The Talitha team has met with the DEIAC seven times. We use the second half of their designated meeting time each month to act in the role of an initiative advisory committee for this work. We also conducted two group listening sessions. The DEIAC and executive team met separately in that capacity. And then we had one joint DEIAC and executive team meeting that just happened on the 12th of this month. So that should give you a general overview of what we've been doing so far. But before I pass it off, I'd also like to take a moment to highlight that this initiative's approach, how this initiative approached investing in local community. Through this project, we set an example for future engagement by reinvesting between 5 and 8% of budgeted dollars back into the community. We did this formally by compensating our community partners for their time and participating in the IDIs, recognizing that the time that it takes to give thorough and thoughtful feedback is valuable. And we did this informally by choosing local businesses, including those owned by the BIPOC community, to purchase meals or supplies from for the several in-person meetings that we had. And from there, I will pass it off to the Talitha team.
Appreciate you, Noel. Your leadership is noted, inspired, and respected tremendously. I am so pleased to see how many people are present in person and also online. And my name is Charis, and I put the pronunciation in parentheses. Believe it or not, the last time we came and presented, it was six months ago, exactly on the 24th, exactly six months, March 24th. So when we were all six months younger, right? And now, hopefully, we're all six months older and more wiser in some ways. I do want to present this as a collective work that we co-labor, we co-labor collaborated between my team and Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Board members. If you are online, you could just do your little raising hands or thumbs up or fist bump. And if you are in person, just wave your hand up high and proud, please. Yes. I went back and calculated, you can put your hands down now. I went back and calculated, each of you, since the kickoff, have put in about 15 hours per person. There's about seven of you. There's over 100 hours of volunteer hours, just to get to where we are. For that, words are not enough to say thank you. And I know that our nine months' worth of effort is not going to do, we're not going to cover this, even if I talk for a whole 90 minutes of the work session. Do not worry, council, I will talk you to sleep. Even if we do that, it does not do justice. So we're going to try our best to show the key points. And then, a part of it is, plan is easier than execution. So the real work is also going to happen once we roll out, and I'm including myself in it, but the truth is, once the city and DEIAC roll out, the implementation phase. So, for the next few minutes, so our portion started at 5:35, if the timekeeper could keep time for me. For the next few minutes, can you just take a deep breath? Sit back and allow us to tell a story. Story of people from all walks of life coming together to use our gifts, talents, and ability to create a city and sustain a city for this generation and many generations to come. The methods that we use can be summarized with this quote by Hans Roslin, who is an epidemiologist. I got this from a wall in University of Washington Population Science Building. "The world cannot be understood without numbers, but the world cannot be understood with numbers alone." So we will infuse throughout our presentation empirical data from quantitative as well as qualitative. And yet, it will not do justice to the beauties, the brokenness, and everywhere in between of your beautiful city called McMinnville. Next. This is the layout of what we're going to be talking about. I'm going to let you take a look. Pretty straightforward. And joining me today to present is my fellows, my Associate Principals Carol Rosomolsky and Luz Martinez-Bois from Talitha. If you just want to wave your hands. They're going to turn off their cameras and turn back on when they present. I'm just going to keep my camera on because I will do the prompting of the next slide. All right, next. Don't want to bore you. This is what Noel said. Hundreds and hundreds of documents reviewed. And thanks to Mayor, who pointed out that there were documents that the department had submitted prior to Talitha's work, which was a really awesome info. So we went back and thanks to staff, got the documents right away. We looked through all of them. Site visits, me and my staff. We hit the grounds on every block in the city. If my associate was, Carol, was at Talitha, at McMinnville, she would say, "My wheels were rolling in every streets of McMinnville." 28 individual interviews comprising, what constitutes the 28 is seven department heads and other city affiliates, staff, volunteers, also, community members from all walks of life. What's very encouraging is that, can let someone in, Mayor Drapkin, she might want to be in the meeting. What's really awesome is that a list of people that we ought to be engaging, we asked the people we interviewed, who should we be talking to? Who is missing at the conversations? It's called snowball sampling. We have a list of 70 people who still want to be interviewed and participate in this process. So we're handing that list over to the city, right? Speaking of a city that wants to stay engaged, be inspired. We also have two listening sessions. I have been humbled by the intellectual humility and the inspiration that people continue to express throughout the process, and especially from the executive team. All of them combined are smarter than me, I can tell you that. And yet, they show up willing to learn, willing to be interviewed, willing to be assessed, willing to have their work pointed out that this is an area of improvement. Nobody wants to be told there is an area of improvement. I mean, I can speak for anybody, but it's hard to hear that. And yet, there is authentic, difficult, authentic conversations happening. And thanks to Noel, who is also an Engagement Manager, Communications Manager, so she is also using her position, talents, and ability to communicate back to the entire workforce within the city of McMinnville. Next. The methods that we use, mixed engagement, and you will hear IDI a lot. We use the Two Different Interview Moderators Guide, we call it. You need to know your audience, right? The questions that we ask to a city staff, we can't ask so much to the external community members. We use Two Different Moderators Guide. We analyze both sets of data, but we specifically are presenting today the overlapping theme that we hear from both stakeholders. Next. Oh, wait, and why do we do this approach? Go back, please. It's because we want to better understand similarities as well as differences. And then we want to hear the gaps in perception. So for example, if we're asking, is the city, how is the city doing in this area? And the city staff might think, "I'm going to give it a two out of five." But then, external community member could say, "Hey, they're actually doing a pretty good job, and I'm seeing the progress," right? So that's the reason why we kind of take a deep dive at the overlapping. Next. Now, this is where, so, 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 you'll be seeing the little barrel and the rain cloud a lot. And that's one exciting thing that we get to do at Talitha is, you know, perhaps, we're kind of suggesting, will you consider this as your city mascot? So, the little barrel's name is capacity, and the little rain cloud name is ability. Because we are saying this capability. We are, we are hearing a lot about capacity. We're hearing a lot about, we need to build up capability. And the truth of matter is, we need both. So we're kind of incorporated that little mascot-type thing into our roadmap here. So, let's just quickly go through the first council, so from very, and bubble away, March 24th. We came, we spoke, we told you what we're going to do, and we did it, right? Existing document, it generated score analysis, strengths, challenges, opportunities, and threads. April 15th is when we, Talitha, presented the score analysis to DEIAC Committee on June 27th. And then we did the work with the in-person engagement, IDI, 28 interviews, 28 hours. That's not even counting the time that my staff spent coordinating meetings. And then we presented the key themes on August 8th at the DEIAC Committee meeting. Just last week, September 12th, I think it was last week, it just feels like it's last week. I was in McMinnville in person with my team. And my team, Executive Committee, and DEIAC met, and we looked at 45% completion of the packet which the council has today. In between, I also engaged with DEIAC as well as executive team separately, right? Before we kind of matchmake them, we met them separately. And here we are today. And today, the packet that the council received is at about 90 to 95% completion. And it is very intentional that we don't just slap the 100% completion packet. Because, again, I'm a regional planner by training. I believe in participatory planning, not only of spatial infrastructure, but also of how we do the work. To that end, council, I hope we have a robust discussions today because you're going to complete it with us, right? So with that, Luz is ready for the next slide. And hold on, because, just go back, I have to, I have to do this. So like, once the 100% completion, OTP, which you'll hear more of, is done, cap and able, capable together, is going to help you guys, hopefully, launch the next phase. All right, Luz?
Yes. So, as we looked at DEIA culture and posture within the city, most external stakeholders who have had interactions with the city reported that their interactions have been positive. So when we asked the question, do community members feel welcome and represented at the city? Well, 100% of external stakeholders said they felt welcome when they interacted with the city. 93% of external IDI participants said city staff are not representative of its community. So the city government, inclusive of all branches, is not reflective of the community. We also asked the staff a few questions. So, if they thought if DEI is a priority for the city, we received a mixed response. 50% of internal respondents said that DEI is a priority for the city, while another 50% reported that DEI is not a priority. Next. As we look at the overlapping themes, so, the following things stood out to us. Lacking clear leadership and concerted efforts to advance DEIA in policy, procedure, and practice. There's a need for strategic drivers to operationalize DEIA across departments. Marktown 2032 Strategic Plan serves as an initial cultural driver by enlisting equity as one of the city's core values. However, it does not offer a procedural guide on executing equity policies and programs and services. Also, there's a recognition of the need to remove bureaucratic barriers as well as to improve language accessibility. However, the city does not know what to do, where to start, or who should take ownership. There's also that deficiency mindset, as Charis mentioned, that is, that was held by many of our internal respondents. We need more capacity, more resources. We have to prioritize compliance so that our existing funding is not taken away. And as we look at these quotes, some of our interviewees said, "Compared to the neighboring cities, McMinnville is a safe haven for my family." Another one said, "I'm afraid current efforts are COVID-driven as opposed to community-driven. I feel that once money from COVID is over, DEI efforts will go away." And if there is something we get from this, it does not require money or more resources. It is a shift of mindset and perspective. Given the data and the comments and concerns so far, what can we do with what we have now? And as, and as I say that, I want to highlight the little barrel and the little cloud, because together, we are capable.
It's very important to our work that voices of the young people are included throughout the process. One of our DEIAC Committee members, who I saw sitting there, Viviana, is also actively engaged in the process, but often reminded us that I am not the only one with a voice, you know? And that really hits me. And people are talking. Young people are talking with their paintbrushes. They may not talk the way we talk. They may not show up to the city council meeting, but they've been painting. And I happened to be in McMinnville on the day. Many of them are painting on Third Avenue. Just take a look. What this means to me is that DEIA, A, Accessibility Values. You've got to feel it. You've got to feel it. Next.
Hello, I'm Carol, and I'm glad to be here with you today. I'm going to talk about one of the core themes that came out of our research. Before I continue, can I just get confirmation that you can hear me okay? Just a thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Thank you. So, a core theme that manifested in our research was a sense of agency, which gets at the idea of, am I seen, am I heard, and am I valued? The themes that we heard in this area was that the DEIA efforts appear to be staff-led as opposed to a city-wide effort. And this speaks to the fact that you have wonderful, committed people at McMinnville, working at the city, who are focused and committed to DEIA, but it has yet to take root in regular city operations. In addition to that, the impact of the EIA efforts requires more communication, monitoring, and evaluation. Recognition of the increasing needs of community-led solutions is important, but some departments in the city do not know where to begin. And again here, we want to call attention to the fact that you do have folks at McMinnville who are doing this work and who can mentor other parts of the city to come along and join them. A third theme that we found with respect to sense of agency was that city internal departments are still struggling with mutual trust, collaboration, and communication. There may be pockets where this is true, that relationships are healthy and well-functioning, but we want to see that built across the city. Next slide.
Before I jump on the next slide, can we go to the first slide? And I do not want to dismiss the voices of the community. So, Carol, I will read it, not to worry.
Thank you, Charis.
There are efforts that the city has. Are they utilizing them to the best of their ability? Or are they just going to use this effort, meaning the organizational assessment, as one-time thing? Then forget about them. Next person notes, I think the representation that the city has is very tokenized. They have people to serve just for a language as a resource, but not necessarily people that are representatives of their community, because I don't see any Latinos, and I don't see people of color in the leadership in the city of McMinnville. So I don't think it is representative, and I don't think it's very inclusive. Next. Back to you. You got to feel it. Young people are saying that they want McMinnville to be a community of peace, community of unity, community of love. I'm privileged to talk to the artists who painted the middle mural. We can do it. Two days ago was International Day of Peace. It does not need an International Day of Peace for the young person to actually paint Peace Bird. I think that's a peace bird on Third Avenue. The white dove, symbol of peace. Next.
That's mine. When we look at DEIA challenge and risks, challenges and risks, on a scale of 0 to 5, 0 being the least and 5 being the most satisfied, when we ask, "Do you feel that your needs are understood?" The average response was 3.3. So you're getting closer to the 5, but not there yet. Are there barriers to accessing the programs and services, are there barriers to accessing the programs and services from the city? 90% of external stakeholders identify barriers to accessing city programs and services, and there was confusion mostly revolving around the hours of operation and who's responsible and who's accountable. And these percentages are based on the interviewees who opted to respond to these questions. Next. DEIA challenges and risks, overlapping themes. There are social tensions, social anxieties, past, present, and the near future. Fear of further division between racial and cultural groups. When we look at diversity versus division, diversity being misunderstood or misconstrued as used as a tool to divide. Diversity is not seen as an asset. When we look at unity versus uniformity, unity is a constant effort to treat each other with respect and tolerate each other's differences. Uniformity is the state of being uniform, holding the same views, beliefs, standards, ethics, et cetera. With uniformity, there's no allowance for differences. There's also the ongoing unmet needs by the socially vulnerable. 100% of the external stakeholders who allegedly hold socially marginalized identities are worried that DEI efforts might get dismantled when equity leaders in the city leave their positions. And as we read some of the quotes from the public, I want you to keep in mind and think about those who are feeling nervous and anxious about politics and the social unrest, given the climate in our nation and the upcoming elections. I think the whole history of Oregon, it was not very welcoming to people of color in McMinnville, being a more rural area. We know there is some political views and things like that. I think that historically underrepresented, marginalized community, the challenges are so many. I think it is best for the city to, well, there are organizations like Unidos in McMinnville that have data, that have historical facts, and that can be shared with the city. I think if the city partners with the right people, they will know that. And then another one, I think fear of making a mistake is prevalent in our organization culture. Next.
I get to speak about opportunities to improve DEIA. Now, this is a great topic to be able to... Now, this is a great topic to be able to speak to because this is an area where there was a lot of agreement. Before I go into the bullet points on this slide, I want to call upon the people in the room to think of opportunities as a way of realizing your priorities. Many times in city government, we are faced with a sense of scarcity and a sense of lack of time. We believe that by looking at opportunities and priorities, we can address these challenges. Opportunities that were identified in our research include city-led learning and development opportunities to improve inner capabilities to create a more welcoming, just, and inclusive community internally and externally. City staff and leadership beyond the usual suspects need to show up in community-led events, meeting people where they are at and on their turf. Providing wraparound services is also important. Wraparound services describe areas of care that address all areas of life. Here, lacking creativity and innovation when partnering with diverse and dynamic communities has been identified as a challenge in an area for improvement. Lastly, where we found a lot of agreement is 100% of our respondents felt that the DEIA work should be held and led by the city manager's office.
I know if y'all caught that. In statistics, this is incredible. A hundred percent internal stakeholders we spoke to was willing to answer that question. Says city manager's office needs to own this work and lead the implementation. We're, we're just breezing through. Six twenty is when we will be done with our presentation. So before that, I do want to, can, can you stop sharing the screen for a second, Eugene? Just wanna see people. Alright. Everybody okay? Alright. I went back and watched the council presentation that Talita did on March 24th. Six months younger. Realized, oh boy, I did not do it justice in terms of introducing my colleagues or who I am. Cause Charis is an achiever, I just dive right in, do the work. But introductions are important because it's part of our stories. My name is Charis. My feet are planted in Toquilla, Washington, which is where the international airport is located. I wasn't born and raised here. I was born in the country of Burma, also known as Myanmar. Came to the United States at the age of 15. I heard about the city of McMinnville at the age of 16. How? Well, a dear friend of ours brought an international student who was studying in Linfield University. Uh huh, McMinnville. I had a hard time pronouncing the city at the time, still an English language learner at the time. Twenty-some years ago. And then so happens, as some of you may or may not know, if you're into international politics, you'll know this. That Burma still has its challenges, especially with pro-democracy movements. And so Linfield University saw a young person who wanted to study pursue economic educational opportunities. And they gave her scholarship, and she was studying at Linfield. I was 15 at the time. I still remember McMinnville because of that gesture of generosity. My mom is watching through the McMinnville Community TV right now because I wanted to, wanted her to hear this story. My mom brought me to the United States with my dad having the vision to bring us here. I share that story, everybody. Cause as I'm talking about marginalized community, language access barrier, I not only speak as an intellectual part, which I also have education in that area. So I speak not only with person with experience, but I also speak as a social scientist. My graduate degree is in regional planning for University of Washington. And I have a political science degree as my undergrad. Before I founded Talita in 2018, I worked as a public servant. I worked just like any of the staff members for 18 years. So as we talk about recommendation, I don't just speak as a social scientist. I don't just recommend as a regional planner. I also speak from my lived experience. Likewise, Carol Rosamolsky is an educator with a master's degree in education, social work, executive, who has used electrical wheelchair her whole life. Luz Boyce, we met in Washington DC when I was working for a think tank. Luz and I met there. We were in our early twenties, just a few years ago, right? And Luz also came with a degree from University of Washington with stakeholder engagement, international politics. We come in fully prepared to tell you that these recommendations are rooted and grounded in our experience as well as our expertise. So with that, I'm gonna ask my colleague Eugene to share the screen again with recommendations. Take a deep breath. Here we go. Recommendation stands out of the things we hear, the documents we review, challenges, strengths, opportunities we have seen, and the vision that McMinnville wants to pursue. Next. For the execution of this plan to be as holistic as possible, staff and leaders from all city departments should consider actively and constructively partnering with each other under the stewardship of the city manager's office. That's our preamble for the recommendation section. Let's go. So I'm fully aware that McMinnville went through a very rigorous, robust, and intense process to put together its first ever strategic plan. I am not familiar with a strategic plan that is 32 years long. Usually strategic plans are updated every five years. Cities have different capacity to do that. So that said, core themes that the strategic plan had set out is great, right? There is like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Strategic priorities that you all aspire to and are working towards. And the organizational transformation plan, which is the output of our assessment, is embedded in all those, right? So OTP, henceforth, will be described as OTP, has three pillars. One, strengthen DIAC strategic drivers, I should say DIA, diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility strategic driver. That's pillar one. By doing actions under pillar one, you also are working towards meeting the objectives, strategic objectives, three and four of DIAC committee. In so doing, you support and facilitate meeting the strategic priorities of Met Town 2012. We also have divided the recommendations in chewable sizes, and so to speak. Not all done all at once. There's a famous saying, Taoism. The journey of a thousand miles starts with a single step. Year two and three, you'll emphasize on, we recommend the city to emphasize on pillar two, enhance public input, involvement, and participation. There are specific actions will help you meet strategic objective of DIAC three and five, as well as the Met Town 2032 strategic priority for civic leadership and engagement. Lastly, this is an emphasis, right? This is not one and done. You don't, you don't become an expert and you don't stop because McMinnville is a living city. The city government is a living organization. But in year three and five, you start to emphasize to meaningfully invest in mutually beneficial collaboration and partnership. The vision we had as we put together as a collective is that year one and two, three efforts will help you position city to be in a place where community is starting to trust you more. When I say community, I'm not just talking about a select few, but community from diverse perspectives. Again, that will help you with DIAC strategic objective one, two, and then Met Town 2032, economic prosperity and housing affordability. And the third one, I can't recall, but you'll have to look it up yourself. Alright, next. So here's the breakdown, right? We talked about goals, strengthening. How do you strengthen the strategic driver? We came to this recommendation because there is such thing as cultural driver, right? So for example, courage, stewardship, accountability, equity. Who is familiar with that? Anybody in the room, council members? Why don't I pick on our council liaison? Council Gary, unmute your phone. All these things that I just touted, equity, stewardship, accountability, what are they? I'm gonna put you on the spot, I warned you about this, counselor.
Equity and stewardship and accountability.
Yeah, what are those? Courage?
Yes.
Alright, Mayor Dropkin, help him out here, what are they?
Those are stated city values. Those are our four stated city values.
Great. Those are called cultural drivers, right? Culture is about values, worldview, interests, right? There are subcultures, language, dance, right? There is a drive in McMinnville 2032, which is needed. But it's like trying to clap a hand with one hand. But if you really wanna operationalize these value, you need to have a strategic driver. So this is how we are recommending that you explore to do this. One, DIA is a buzzword. Let me be the first to say, if the press is in the room, feel free to quote me. It's a buzzword, but what do we really mean? So number one, the city needs to have a unifying set of definition to use for the citywide effort. And DIAC, DIA committee has done the work for you all. They have created definition that you could use for citywide effort. Initiate the use of Equity Lens Toolkit. It was the DIA committee that started to have that conversation, as noted on March 24th meeting, right? And we looked at those documents, and we have revised and created Equity Lens Toolkit. By the way, is Councilor Sal Peralta in the room?
Yes.
Yes. We also know in our research that councilor served on the League of Oregon City's Equity Lens Document Development Committee. And so what we did is the Equity Lens, we took some good things from the DIAC effort. We also gleaned from Council Peralta's committee. And then also from Seattle Housing Authority, where Carol and I, collectively, we have 23 years of affordable housing. And so we also gleaned from that and created toolkit for you all. But here's the deal, guys. Plans do not communicate on their own. They just sit in the shelf. They don't speak, they don't engage. So we gotta have a community communication strategy of what's happening, what has happened. Cause that is also one of the frustration that we hear in the community members, like, it's very extractive. City come and city go, asking a bunch of questions, what do they do with it? Blah, 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 how, how, how's my input being implemented? That's also what we heard. We didn't have time to go through all the findings, but please read the packet, it's all in there. Fourth, design and implement an employee engagement survey. The last time I checked, and if the HR department director is here, feel free to correct me, I don't think there has been one in the city. I do understand that departmentally, police department have done, and reportedly, department HR director did a fabulous job with the police department engagement. What if we also do that citywide? Employees are also very tired. Understandably, as a society, what have we gone through in the last five years? How satisfied are they? Carol talked about a sense of agency. Why don't we dip deeper? If we're gonna implement, we need to, we need to check in with the hands and the feet that are gonna implement and ask them, how are you doing? That's what employee engagement surveys about. Next. Again, oh, there it is. Little descriptions. Pillar one. Next. Enhance public input, involvement, and participation. I don't know if my DIAC committee members, pardon me if I'm just naming you outright, but majority of them are super excited about this. This is what democracy is about. This is what gets me excited about the United States. But then how do we do it? Who does it? How do we know we're doing a good job? Or not good or bad, but how do we know we are making progress? Cause I don't believe in that binary thinking, are we making progress? We offered a project management tool, implementation, accountability tool. Again, it is because the city already has accountability and stewardship as their values. This is a strategic tool to operationalize it. Next. Two, three, and four. Gotta finalize the communications plan. The plan don't happen on their own. There needs to be an investment in capacity building, capacity and capability development. And those things don't happen on their own. It needs an intentional investment. Public engagement charter, very well-written, embedded and guided by the International Public IA PC organization that does this. It's right there already in the administrative department. Don't reinvent the wheel. That is a reachable fruit. Please, council, review and adopt. Language access plan. Many ways, it is not an option. Whereas many cities and states that receive federal funding, that is a mandate. Executive 1366. Housing affordability, it's my clients are very nervous of January 1st because that's when HOPMA, it stands for Housing Modernization Act. Simplification of forms and languages, no longer an option, but a way of doing business. So plans do not talk on their own. Will you invest? Next. Civic leadership, engagement, and inclusion, strategic goal will be met as you implement this. Lastly, third pillar. I'm gonna pause and ask Noel to tell the story about this picture a little bit for me because this was in the employee engagement newsletter. So not all of us are employees here, so they might not know the full extent of the story.
Sure. So it's sorry about that. Can you hear me? Okay. Let's see. So this is part of a contest that we do each year in partnership with the Oregon Mayors Association. This is, this is the Mayor's Student Contest. So we put out communications to all the students here in McMinnville. Trying, there are different contest levels, so for primary, middle school, and then high school. This was Uh, this was, uh, this picture is Mayor Drabkin at a pizza party at Newby Elementary. Uh, for the winner, I believe, was Lillian Goodman. Uh, we are doing a mini town hall and giving the students an opportunity to ask questions. Uh, we partnered with that teacher who was actually able to give, uh, several lessons on civic engagement and, and what does a mayor do, what does city, uh, government do? Um, so this was a really great opportunity for, uh, these students and, uh, the community. I'm actually gonna be back there on Thursday, uh, at Newby doing a similar sort of, um,
Well, well, there'll be pizza, Noel.
No pizza that time, yeah.
Oh, great. So, so it, this is just a snippet, right? Like, I also want to celebrate the successes that's already happening. And so I was there for the Mayor's, um, day of please help me out. What was it? Like, the Mayor's?
Community fair and state of the city address.
Thank you, Mayor. And I was there, uh, me and Larry Miller in the back, yip-yapping, chit-chatting. And I saw Lillian got up and got her little award. What's so amazing about this is that it was one person who submitted the essay. Everybody got to eat the pizza. Look at that classroom. And I'm very intentional, y'all. Young people, children deserve better. Next. And you all know that. I love the story of Liz Resmussen and Yasmin Asghada and, uh, the library director in the room. Shout out to you all. Department, library department, look at the data for, uh, neighborhoods that sign up for summer reading program. And they saw that certain neighborhoods signed up very little, low data, focused on getting the mobile, uh, mobile library to those neighborhoods. And Yasmin is one of those young person who benefited from the mobile neighborhood being, uh, mobile library being there. And now Yasmin is a summer intern at the library. When people see themselves in the places of anything, right? Business, commerce, government, and they say, I can be that. Those stories are gonna go out. Noel's going, doing a good job, starting to communicate internally and externally, it's gonna need to go out. But she can't just do everything on her own. DIA operationalization needs help. And we have provided in your packet, next picture, also that, um, appendix D comparative city studies. It's not one person doing everything. And it's quite unusual for a communications and engagement person to be just shouldering the execution of DEIA. So capacity and resources is something that we totally need to dive deep. Another success, I visited on a Friday evening, adaptive play opportunity. It happened to be, um, St. Patrick's Day. I, I know that, um, my time's up. Just wanna let you all know, I'm aware, we're, we're coming to an end. St. Patrick's Day, and there was a lapercon little activity, and the, so fun. Uh, there was about five family members and there was a nonprofit organization there. And that executive director of the nonprofit just says, hey, you know what? I want you to know this. McMinnville, I hope you know that they are trying their best to expand accessibility. Just look around you. And I love it because she's like telling me to do my job. Like, please, I love this. Not everybody does that. Bring it on. Look around you. There's like seven staff members for six families and the, the parents of the family members are so grateful. They get a little break, right? And again, those staff members, they don't just show up. You have got to resource them. And then the lapercon's, uh, mustache and everything went on our forehead and on our face because one of the young person was like, forget it, I'm not gonna build it. I'm just gonna put it on my face. So we kinda copied her. Again, another event happening September twenty-first. Oh, it already happened. But to show you, you all are doing and following the models that are informed by the community saying, we need this. And certain departments are doing a great job in responding to the need of the community. Next. Invest in mutually beneficial collaboration and partnership. I'm gonna pause and have you read that. And I know that the screen can be fuzzy, so should I just read it? Okay, I'll just do it. I see it, yes. Dedicate personnel for citywide continuous learning and growth opportunities. Again, it's about building capability. And I, I really appreciate Council Gary's in, in, insight in this. In one of the listening session, he said, not everybody is on the same part of the journey, right? Some of us are way ahead in this particular pursuit and some of us are just like, okay, we want to learn more. So to have a continuous learning growth opportunity would help us unify around what does it mean to do this collectively? Provide ongoing employee learning. Again, it's different. The first is to dedicate a person who will facilitate the learning. The second is let's do the learning together. The third is about community outreach strategic plan, uh, community outreach strategy rooted in DEIA principles. That which I call COS, all the acronyms, it's already there. We, Talitha Consuls, produced that for City of McMinnville when we supported PROS Plan. So what we're saying is please do that for citywide, but not just departmental level. Lastly, how do we know we're progressing? Monitor, report, and evaluate DIA efforts and report back to DEIA committee and council yearly. Accountability. All right. I think we have come to our very last slides. Next. I put this in there and it's in the council packet for this, uh, and I don't wanna steal the thunder from, uh, Eco Northwest, we call it. Eco Northwest or, uh, Heather Richards Department, but it is in the packet, right? As a regional planner, I go there. You cannot talk about equity, inclusion, and the output is justice without talking about economic justice. Please pay attention to on whose back industries in McMinnville is thriving. Who benefits? More, who benefit less? Educational attainment in, uh, McMinnville is about twenty-four percent compared to what? Yamhill County, twenty-five? You're like, okay, just one percent. But hey, wait. Service industry, hence, income level is lower. When the bottom sells out and falls out in an economy, which it did during COVID, people at the bottom hits the ground first. And service industry, oftentimes, service, main Oregon state economy is built on funds and, uh, like, uh, fishery and, uh, the second part is, uh, service of caring for the elderly, right? I mean, aging population in McMinnville who is working at the retirement homes, assistant homes. So a big part of pillar three is also embedding economic justice. With that, let's just slide through thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three, and I'm, it's time to open up for questions. Oh. Love this picture. Thank you, Jody Christensen. I, I don't think I have acknowledged you, who has been a great support. And we visited community development, um, office. We got our little, I love Mac. Saw that banner, um, in the city, and boy, did I hold on to that image. That was also the day when I got the news about the political violence in some parts of the US, and I held on to the images, the voices, the visions that I see in your beautiful city. We can do this. Thank you.
Right, thank you so much. Um, we will open it up to both the committee and the council for questions, comments, et cetera. Uh, does anybody wanna be brave and was that a, were you pulling your mic towards you?
Yep, so I guess I'm first.
Please, yes, after you.
I just really wanted to say thank you, Karis. I'm Caitlin Nemeth, by the way. Um, one of the DEIAC co-chairs, um, and it has been a really amazing experience to just get to know Karis and her team. Um, they've done a really great job and I'm really excited that we're here.
Thank you so much. Chair?
I have a question actually about the, uh, presentation. I noticed that on page six, it says twenty-eight in-depth individual interviews with a mix of community members. But on page seven, it has twenty-seven individual interviews. Was one, um, community?
I am so impressed. You really got it right. Twenty-eight is the right answer. I, I will be very, um, I, I have, I, I cannot name the department that came in late in the interviews, um, but, um, it should be twenty-eight because just last week, I got my very last city department head I got to interview. Larry Eagle Eye.
Mm-hmm.
And then I have one more question. On page twelve, where it says, uh, number three, fifty percent of the internal stakeholders, the DI is a priority for the city. Fifty, fifty percent reported DI is not a priority for the city. How many people were interviewed total in the city? How many surveys did you receive back?
Um, so seven department heads. Some of them, uh, at, at the end of our interviews, uh, we talk about who is it that we need to interview more? And so I, I, I do wanna be very careful here, um, because pure retaliation is one of the things that is indicated, right, Larry? So, so I promised in my interviews that I will not divulge and I will secure anonymity for them. And so out of the twenty-eight, as we show in our slides, seventy-five percent, so do the math. What is seventy-five percent of twenty-eight? Can someone do the math real quick? Is the internal key stakeholders.
Okay, baby.
What is seventy-five percent, twenty-eight?
I think the twenty-one.
Twenty-one people. There you go.
All right, thanks.
Additional questions, comments? Council President.
Yeah, just building on that question from, uh, the chair. So would that mean that on item number six, most external stakeholders, when it's talking about a hundred percent, ninety percent, that there was only six people interviewed or seven people interviewed to make up that other twenty-eight?
Can you tell me the slide numbers so I can pull it up?
Uh, slide twelve, it's your number six on B, key takeaways from internal and external stakeholder interviews.
Slide number twelve, Eugene, can you pull it up? I do want to tell you this. It's a mixed method engagement. We've reviewed over three hundred documents. We were a part of the PROS Plan engagement and we also did these interviews. And so, oh, from statistical perspective, like, is it even worthy of mentioning this? Um, we don't just do this now. We started in two thousand twenty-one alongside, um, the consultant to complete it, NIG. So I do wanna give that context to you, Council, Council President. Uh, what, uh, can Eugene share screen again so I know which slide Council President is referring to? Is this slide?
Uh, it's, it's page twelve in the packet that was sent out. I don't know what slide it was.
Oh, in the pa, oh, in the pa, so you are talking about the packet, not the slide deck. Okay, well, I have the packet. Don't you worry. Give me a minute, sec here. Okay, so let me share my screen. Page twelve, the packet. It's very important that I'm looking at the same document, so bear with me.
I think, Council President, are you referring to the bottom of page thirteen?
No, it's page twelve. It's item B six, and then A and B are sub-items of it. It's twelve out of forty-three on the Talitha report.
Okay, got it. So this is it, right? Challenges and risks?
No. Page twelve of our twenty, of our forty-three page packet that was emailed out.
Okay, see why, why we talk about having a unified definition of DIA? We also need a unified, uh, page numbers here.
It's page eleven of your report, Karis.
Yeah.
So they're just numbered a little bit differently because of the way they come together with the packet.
Page eleven in the middle and page twelve on the right corner.
Ah, I got it. This is it. That's it, right? Barriers?
The one right before it.
The one right before it. Okay. I'm getting there.
There you go. Keep going.
Keep going. Oh, my God, right there.
There you go.
There you go.
Ah, keep finding, great, 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 great. Okay, that's it. All right. So and then bullet point, what bullet point?
Number six, A and B.
Okay, so external key stakeholders, you gotta remember, external key stakeholders is inclusive of the listening session. So DIA committee is considered external key stakeholder as well, right? Because they don't work for the city, right? And then, um, alongside that is the people who we interviewed. And I do want Eugene to share the screen to the slide that, uh, Noel presented. So, Counselor, uh, to answer a question, is it just six people? The answer is no. It is not just six people.
Okay, so, I mean, how mu, was it six hundred people then or like, what makes up?
The city, it's the city.
They had a hundred percent on.
No, it, it's a fair question. It's a fair question. Uh, so DEIAC committee, we had three, um, listening sessions. So Noel and, uh, Council, uh, the presidents can tell me how many people are on their committee.
We had about, uh, s, between seven and nine. Depends on, uh, depends on what month you ask for the DEIAC, yeah.
Right. So seven and nine, and then we also had an opportunity to interview six external key stakeholders. And on top of that, we glean, remember, we did that, we did the engagement for PROS Plan. Remember that.
Yeah.
Okay? And PROS Plan has over thousands of people engaged. So we glean from that. We don't reinvent the wheel because there is a term, Counselor, you may have heard of this already. Survey fatigue. Since PROS Plan engagement was so robust and so successful, we glean from that also.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's a very good question and I am just liking, and I, I wanna go back and remind where we first started. Stories can be told with numbers, but they cannot be told with numbers alone.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments? Counselor Gary?
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, Karis, I also wanna thank my colleagues on the DEIAC, not only for being here tonight and helping present, but for putting in countless rigorous hours, um, in this effort and the staff that participated. I think this is a really cool, robust document. So it's nice to see this come together with all your efforts. So thank you all for, for being a part of it. Um, a lot of my sort of questions on the document are gonna be more implementation, rollout questions, uh, nuts and bolts. But one question I had for Karis was, can you help me understand the handoff of the document from this document to, uh, uh, a living, living thing that we'll, we'll work through? The organizational transformational plan twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty, um, where it has a sort of year one, two, year two, three, and year three, five, and then big open spots for action steps. How do you envision us working through that document?
I don't know if, if I'm the person to answer that question, really. But what I've seen my past and present clients do is they take a break to celebrate. It's nine months that you all have been working for a long It's nine months that you all have been working for a long time. Fifteen hours per committee member volunteering. Two thousand twenty-four, we're looking at quarter four. Sorry, I'm a businesswoman. I go by a quarter, so October first will be quarter four. Will you pause and celebrate this milestone? Will the couns, council consider adopting this plan? Or not even adopting, my clients actually do, accepting the plan. And then you take a break, you come back with renewed energy in January two thousand twenty-five and huddle again. And I'm going to go back to what my, uh, colleague Carol said. You have all you need. The external folks, even if I only talk to six people, let me tell you, these six people are brilliant. They are light speed ahead in bringing economic justice, social justice, uplifting the tide so that all boats rise. Even that six people can help you get there. So lean into your community of experts sitting in the city hall right now. Carol?
Yeah, I just want to call attention to the photos that we included in the presentation because in this we are reflecting back to you what you've already done. And that is consistent with the goals and the pillars that we described in our report. So it may not feel like it when you're engaged in real time during these activities, what impact you're having. But that's why we wanted to reflect that back to you. Because you're having a lasting impact beyond the day of the event and we saw that. And we wanted to make sure that we shared that as a part of the story that we put together in this report. So I know that sounds maybe a little bit squishy and ideological in nature, but that's how people experience their communities. So you have a long inventory of events and experiences that you can build on. And taking that break to celebrate and to reflect will allow that to take root as you enter twenty twenty-five and beyond.
Additional questions, comments? Observations?
Mostly just also wondering what, how the document will be used by the city. I know in my case, um, this is, I only have about three months left in this committee. So I'll be looking at it from the outside, reading the newspaper or, you know, making observations as to how it's implemented. Um, but I'm mostly just left wondering what will happen after I leave, I guess. Not going anywhere still, McMinnville resident of the committee.
You'd be reading about it through the communications plan, I would think, that was detailed. Uh, I'm, I'm going to take that as an open-ended question, uh, unless it was meant with specificity towards.
Just more of a comment.
Yeah, thank you.
And, uh, I, I just want to clarify, I, I can't see who is talking. Is it, is it the, uh, committee, uh, DIA committee member Efren speaking?
That's correct.
Thank you for being here.
Counselor Peralta?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I do think the council should acknowledge receipt of the plan. In terms of Efren's, uh, question, one thing I really appreciated about this work was that they provided the responsible, accountable, consulted, informed matrix as a tool for more accountable decision-making because I think that that's something that can help staff when they're making any kind of decision to ask who are the key stakeholders? Who are stakeholders that are not always consulted or who are placed within that framework? So it gives you an opportunity to ask questions about, um, about, about who's being included. I think that's really important. And broader, I just want to thank the people on the DEIAC committee for, for your work in the past nine months. I hope this is the beginning and not the end of your volunteer service with the city. Uh, and as well, thank you to Charis for the work of you and your team.
Mayor, if I could.
Please.
Um, staff is looking for direction on what you would like to see in next steps. I've also had the opportunity and honor to work with the DEIAC and they're excited to get to work on, on the next steps, uh, related to this plan. So if you could give us some guidance on what you might like to see in the near future or some opportunity for the committee to be thinking about, um, how they will engage with this plan on your behalf.
Thank you. Uh, let me start by backing up, there was a comment earlier about adopting versus accepting the plan. But, uh, formally, we will, uh, adopt, uh, we will formally adopt the plan or the, or that would be the intent would be a formal adoption of the plan, uh, uh, just for clarity on process, right?
When it's completed.
When it's completed, yes.
And, and as Charis mentioned earlier in, uh, earlier tonight, that we are about ninety, ninety-five percent. So this is kind of your opportunity to, if there's things that are, that are missing or things that you would like to see emphasized perhaps, this would be a great opportunity to give that feedback.
Um, yes, so, so pause and feedback, think what you want to offer. Meanwhile, I want to tell you this, I'm coming back in person with my team on October ten uh, to engage with managers and supervisors, um, to introduce them to OTP, right? And, um, again, you have to have a buy-in to build this from ground up. This is a mindset, this is an approach. You can have this implemented without the hands and the feet that will implement. So, so we're going to come, we're going to have breakfast, we're going to talk. I'm going to take questions from these people who are working hard. So that's happening. Therefore, it is right now at ninety, ninety-five because their voices matter also, okay? So just want to put it out there.
Thank you. Excellent. Um, so a couple of things. When the adoption happens, how will the document interplay with the strategic plan? Uh, you want me to reframe my question? Um, uh, so, uh, the strategic plan is the guiding document that, uh, sets out kind of the work or the scope of work that the city will undertake, including this work. Um, uh, and so I, I guess I'm asking now, as different initiatives are coming up, when we're going back to root them, are we rooting them? How are we rooting them with the, with the, with the two guiding documents?
I'm, 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 I'm going to let Noel answer it, sorry, sorry. And I'll go after you now.
Yeah, so that was what, as we were, as we were, um, working through this final or mostly final version, um, of the document, that was one of the things that we had actually brought up. We wanted to see how those two things could, um, could, could marry. And that's why, um, throughout the document, you see, um, the strategic pillars and how those fit into and how they relate to the particular, the goals that we have in the strategic plan. So, um, I see in some of the way, uh, the way that we were working with, uh, through council goal setting last year and we were coming up with the work plans and, um, and those particular items. The assessment was part, falls under, uh, the engagement and inclusion specific goal. So, I mean, they're interrelated, um, already, um, and I see.
If I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
So one specific example, Mayor, um, if Susan Muir is in the room, I, I would love for her to turn on her microphone. But Stevens Park Plan, the acquisition that's happening, correct? Can you give me the name?
Um, I'm not sure what, which one you're talking about.
So, so we're talking about the Parks Prose Process right now. We're talking about levy renewal, some of the changes, you know, all the housing or even if it's not Parks Plan, even if it's the affordability, housing affordability situations that you all are talking about, right?
Yeah.
Equity Toolkit is there.
Yeah.
Year one, in my, uh, in our year one goal recommendation. So that is the action steps that you can take in year one. So Eugene, can you please go to, uh, strategic pillar one, the, the one that has equity, uh, equity toolkit? Uh, let's see here, right there, right? Oh, previous one? And again, this can be adopted if you want to do it tomorrow. You, and to be honest with you, this is more of the operational approach. So Equity Toolkit can be used today if you want, right? And you can embed it to any actions or initiative.
Okay, uh, the other question that I have related to this is, um, it looks to me that a, a lot of this work um, really lies in the city manager's, uh, office and under the city manager's direction. Um, and so I see specific action steps related to the organizational transformational plan, uh, for the following five years. And when I read the, um, the, the, the clarifying paragraph on what the goal is in order to achieve, uh, the, in order to, to do the action step that achieves the goal, um, for each year, I don't always see a, uh, how or a deeper layer of how. And I'm not implying that that should be in there necessarily. And I, to expand, uh, we'll just go off the first one. Um, create a unifying set of dish definitions, uh, to use for citywide work in McMinnville. Uh, wonderful, uh, that work, it seems to me, would lie, uh, under the city manager's office. Uh, and, but then as I read the rest of the, um, I, what am I trying to get at? Uh, I, how do you incorporate direction into this plan to help avoid failed methodologies? In other words, if we were to say, uh, you know, we take this goal and, um, this would not happen, but for instance, let's say a city manager says, Mayor, what's our definition of equity going to be? And we say, okay, and we write a definition of equity and then that goes out across all departments. That wouldn't achieve, that would not achieve the intent. So I guess my question is, will this plan provide us that, uh, will it teach us how to use the tool?
Yes.
Maybe that's a good way.
Yes, the answer is yes. And then I, I, I respectfully disagree that, uh, the definitions might not meet the intent because the intent is not from Talitha. The definitions were created by DIA committee sitting in that room.
Uh, yeah, I guess, um, sorry, uh, what I'm wanting to make sure is that the plan contains not just what should be achieved, but how to achieve it. That was a much clearer way of saying what I was trying to say.
That's all right. One of the things that I want to tell you all is that perfection is the enemy of good. And one of the things that is, in the quote in the presentation, there's a culture of making mistakes, fear of making mistakes. Try. You have all you need. DIA committee are brilliant people with, you know, you have an equity person from YanHale Public Health. You have an equity person from Fortune five hundred company in there. They have your back. And we're also, by the way, October eleventh, DIA committee is going to be having breakfast and having conversations, shared humanities with supervisors and managers. We have a prioritization matrix that we went through at Noel. We told Noel, this is not the time to go through Excel spreadsheet. There is a community outreach strategy where we talk about mission-centered approach, which I, I'm so delighted to hear that Parks Department is already using it. Mission-centered approach, place-centered approach, people-centered approach. All those in the a hundred percent completion will come as appendices. And the final, the final deliverable will be hundreds of pages.
Okay, so what I hear, uh, you saying back to me is when I read this and I go, okay, well, we've got, uh, uh, our, our goal for year one, two, and then we have action items underneath it. And what I hear you saying to me is in my concern of, of adequate execution, that really what we should do is to turn back to the DEIAC and say, how would you like goal one executed? Is that what you're saying?
DIA is a volunteer, as, as you know, Mayor, you, 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 all of you are here with, with McMinnville, which I have tremendous, I respect. The execution, as you said, and it's regrettable that the city manager is not here, but, uh, the execution lies in the office of the city manager. And the how is in the packet, which I already listed. I'm not in the position to answer, and the reason is I'm not staff.
Yeah, m- maybe my question is really to the members of the DEIAC. Is that what you would like to see happen with this? Is that we take this goal, we're just, as example, create a unifying set of definitions to use? Is what you would like to see as an outcome be that, uh, you are turned back to and said, give us suggestions or tools for how you would, how, the best ways to execute that? And then that can get kind of put through that city process of going, okay, well, where would the funds come from for this methodology or the other, et cetera?
I like to address this. I'm not going to address your question, Mayor, but I do want to say something regarding this document. I, I've been involved in this process from the time this, uh, committee was formed. And the one thing that I noticed when I read the presentation tonight was the five objectives that was placed in Mac Town twenty thirty-two by the city council before I joined, this committee was formed. Act that we protect people from discrimination and harassment. And that is embedded in this document by putting, I, I, I typed, by placing actions in the toolkit so folks can ask the right questions. Um, celebrate diversity in McMinnville. That is something that needs to be done consistently. So all folks feel that they are welcome and able to work in McMinnville with no, with no issues of discrimination. Cultivate cultural competency. These are the issues that the, the council put in for twenty thirty-two. Grow the city's employees, boards, and commissions to reflect our community. That is also something that needs to be seen. That is also mentioned in this document. And also improve access by identifying and removing barriers for their participation. When I asked the first question of, um, who participated, one of the reasons I was asking that question is to make sure folks were comfortable with answering that survey, were not having re, uh, retribution to them. So I think that at this point, this committee has put in a tremendous amount of work, a tremendous amount of effort and a tremendous amount of hours. But it's up to the city council and the folks within the city to implement this plan. We are volunteers and we've done a tremendous amount of work, including the work from, to, um, Charis. But it is up to someone in the city to drive it. And if it's not driven, it will just sit on, it'll be a card that's just not workable. And I don't want to see that as a committee member. Um, again, this is just my comment from being in this committee for this long period of time. And everyone that's on this committee has done this as a passion. I've tried to explain that to folks many times. It's a passion. And if the passion is not within the city, this document will not be functional.
Thank you. And we have about one minute left and I know Counselor Menke has a comment. Uh, and just in case there's any lack of clarity, uh, as we move forward towards adoption, uh, my questions are based in making sure that we have the tools we need to begin implementation. Uh, Counselor Menke?
This might take more time than a minute. I, I just, uh, it's been a very interesting conversation and I greatly appreciate all the people on the DEI committee. And Zach has been part of it and Remy, I know in the past has also. One thing that I took away from suggestions tonight that I thought was interesting was certain departments are doing DEI much better than other departments. And the concept of cross-training sounded like a really cool idea. Could somebody elaborate on that just a little bit? I mean, I suppose we don't really have time for it tonight, but I did want.
I, I can elaborate. October eleventh, uh, uh, Counselor Menke, please come if you want to see how that happens. And again, we cannot train people into and out of, um, you know, in ninety minutes we have together. But on October eleventh, uh, when we gather, that is a level of cross-conversation, not necessarily training, but sharing stories, success stories. not necessarily training, but sharing stories, success stories, and sharing practices. And Noel, you have something to say?
I, I just, I, as, as we're here, uh, coming to a close, I did want to say, we have, we have a lot of work cut out for us, I think, and that's pretty clear. I mean, we have a lot of planning to do and a lot of conversations still to be had. So given that, Counselor Mankey, I'm, I'm happy to chat with you about some ideas I have for how that cross-training would happen. Um, also have some, lots of ideas on how we actually move, um, this, excuse me, this work plan forward, um, using the resources that we have right now and then having those conversations about how, how we build capacity um, for this type of work to, to continue moving it forward, so with that.
Alright, thank you, oh, seven o'clock, it's actually seven oh one, so we're going to need to wrap and move forward. You asked for some direction, the direction would be to move the plan forward for adoption. I didn't hear any major edits, um, and I think that the rest of the commentary and notes can be continued, continued, uh, after this evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Okay.